Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 2nd City Council Meeting. Could everybody please take their cell phones out and turn them to silent so that they don't ring? I appreciate that. Mr. Clerk, if you're ready, could we do the roll call, please?
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
We have a quorum. Could we please all rise for the moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
And I'd like to say, let's keep our friends to the South and the East in mind. They're going through what we suffered through last year, but even worse because, you know, we were lucky with the temperatures. They didn't get above 75 degrees when we had the power out. And it seemed like as soon as the power came on, the temperatures went up. Well, they're well over 100 degrees and they don't have any power. So, let's keep them in mind.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's a beautiful evening. Kind of be fun to try one of these meetings outside sometime, wouldn't it? Actually, you know, sit out in the courtyard and enjoy the summer evening and just hope that we don't get any rain while we do it. But I'd like to go forward with some of my mayor's comments for the evening. First, just so we know that the last meeting that I missed, I was returning back from the U.S. Conference of Mayors down in Orlando. And it was a very interesting conference. It was well worth the time and effort spent in driving down there and attending all the meetings. All the news coming out of there wasn't necessarily good, though. So, I'm going to lead off. The first item is that Secretary Henry Paulson, who is the Treasury Secretary, spoke. And in Oklahoma City, two years ago, they had looked at this area and had indicated they felt we would be out of our recession period by about 2013. That prediction has changed. They're pushing it out to 2015. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to be as bad as it is right now, but it does mean that we are going to continue to struggle to see development and see economic investment in this community. We're going to have to be more creative, more aggressive in how we attract businesses to the city of Waukegan. And we're going to have to look to more of our own resources to do so. Second, Vice President Biden attended. And one of the things that he spoke passionately about was the Surface Transportation Bill, which is currently being bottled up in Congress. And he asked all municipalities, all aldermen, everybody, to pressure their elected officials to get that bill passed. This is important. The city of Waukegan has a number of bridges, a number of roads, which are, they are not in best of shape, let's put it that way. We have load limitations on the Genesee Street Bridge. We have limitations on the bridges going to our lakefront. And we also need a great deal of road repair and other type of infrastructure. And this is a bill that this city of Waukegan needs badly. So, I'm asking all of our council members up here tonight and all of you as residents to call Senator Durbin, to call Senator Kirk, to call Senator Dole, and ask them to work to get this bill passed and to start to get this money moving into the economy. This is important. You know, people talk about government investment in the infrastructure as if it were a bad thing. Eisenhower built this system back in the 50s. He was a staunch Republican. He was a military hero, and he saw the need. But what happened after they got this, all this work was done? For some reason, we fooled ourselves into thinking that it would never have to be done again. That's not true. You have to maintain your infrastructure. You can see it everywhere around you. And this is something that as Americans, we have to take unto ourselves and get this moving because if we don't, the alternative is just going to be a disaster. You all remember the bridge falling into the river in Minnesota. We'll play that over and over and over again across the country. And that's what we're faced with. We have got to do something. So, I would ask everybody to take part in this and give our elected officials a call. Now, the U.S. Conference of Mayors passed unanimously a proclamation asking that the Army Corps of Engineers reverse their current philosophy and agree to continue to maintain ports such as ours that are dedicated federal ports of refuge and ports that require access by ships of commerce to serve lakeshore industries. We are waiting to speak directly with staff from the White House and Army Corps about this matter. Our congressional and senate representatives, as well as lobbyists, are aware of this and they are pushing and working on this issue to try to help the city of Waukegan get this moving forward. If we don't get this harbor maintained, we're not just talking about the cost of the maintenance, which is about $280,000 each time you do it, but we're talking about tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars of investment and development that should be occurring along our lakefront according to the master plan, that probably won't. Because without the harbor, you're not going to have the attraction to live alongside the lakeshore. It's all about being close to the lake and being close to a place where you can get your boats in the water. This is extremely important to the city that we get this done. So, we're going to continue pushing this. One nice thing is when every mayor in cities above 50,000 votes for something, the federal government tends to listen. So, let's keep our fingers crossed and hope this works to our benefit and we'll keep working on it. The U.S. Conference of Mayors also passed unanimously a resolution acknowledging the life and death of Ray Bradbury. Several of the mayors came up to me after the resolution was read and relayed to me that how during their young years, how important Ray Bradbury was in their life and how important he was to American literature. And I talked about the concept of beginning a fundraising activity to pay for a statue of Ray. And I actually had a couple of mayors from North Carolina and another location tell me that when we start to give them a call, they'd like to send us a check. This man was universal. He was important to not only us, but he was important to the whole world of literature, whole world of film, whole world of television. He meant the world. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it that way, but he did. He was important. And those of us who were at the quick memorial service that was put together thanks to Dave Motley, Violet Ricker, the folks from the library, Main Street, everybody, those of us that were there know how heartfelt his loss was to many people in Waukegan. So, let's keep his memory alive. Let's get this thing for the statue going. Let's do more than this. Hoping to get the CLC to name their new campus forum. There's a lot of things that we need to do to say thank you to Ray Bradbury and his family, and it starts hopefully very soon. Now, after discussing my concept for a criminal neglected property ordinance that would target high-ranking leadership of banks, mortgage firms, and real estate companies that refused to main properties they either own or are responsible for, I was really surprised how many people came up to me after those meetings and handed me cards with the names of the major banks of the United States on them, telling us, "We want to work with you. We want to make sure we take care of our properties. We want to make sure that we're not harming the city's interest in any way." So, we will sit down over the next couple of weeks and have some phone conferences with these individuals, with our staff, give them some property addresses, and hope that this pays off because we've got to do something here. We cannot just leave this go. And there are groups that have money, that have ownership and control of the properties that we see every day, and they really have to understand that one bad building on a block can eventually ruin a whole block. And that's not what we want to see in Waukegan. We want to see it go the exact opposite way. So, it is something that we will keep pushing and working on, and we will contact these individuals who volunteered their services, and we'll see whether it all makes good or not. Now, my thanks go out to everyone who worked so hard to make the Independence Day Parade such a success. We had a good turnout considering how hot it was, and it looks like we will have a good turnout for our fireworks display this Wednesday, especially since many of our neighbors are canceling theirs due to fire hazards due to our current drought. Now, the fire chief asked me to make sure and mention that everybody in Waukegan understand how dry things are and how dangerous it is right now, not just here, but all over Illinois. Please do not play with fireworks. Don't play with anything right now. Don't play with sparklers. Don't play with the worms. Don't play with anything. Just try to leave it alone for this year and come down to the lakefront, enjoy what the professionals are putting on on your behalf. Because with as dry as things are and as many homes as we have that are completely wood structures, if we get a conflagration going in this city in certain neighborhoods, we could be in real trouble. So, let's keep that in mind. If you see kids that are playing with fireworks, please try to get it away from them. Stop and talk to them about it because it is going to be a real problem. I don't know if you're aware of it, but we have had what they call more condition red fire hazard days in the state of Illinois this year than truthfully I've ever seen. And it's something that we have to be acutely aware of in an older city like Waukegan. Now, I want to commend police officers Meschik, Petan, and Harwood for their great work in apprehending the suspect in a series of armed robberies that were being held out at Fountain Square. They caught the guy on Saturday after he forced his way into a car in McDonald's, I believe, made the driver go to an ATM and take out money. Good work, guys. You know, the hotels out there and the businesses have been getting more and more nervous since this string of events began a couple of months ago. And it's work like this that will instill in them confidence to be able to tell their clientele and their guests that this is a safe place to come, safe place to eat, and that Waukegan is a safe place to have fun in. So, guys, thank you very much for all that you did. Now, I'd like to read a thank you letter regarding a couple of our fire department personnel. They are firefighter/paramedic Brian Jacoby, firefighter/paramedic Brian Rao. And we received a letter from Mr. Anthony Giltner, who was very complimentary of the service and care that they provided to him on June 15th. And the letter reads, "Chief Young, the only reason I am able to write to you today is because of the efforts of firefighters Jacoby and Rao. On the 15th of June, I suffered a massive heart attack. The quick response, diagnosis, and transport to the ER were critical in my recovery. I was diagnosed with a blockage in my left anterior descending coronary artery, which is known as the widow maker. I am alive today and back at work due to the treatment and professionalism of the emergency medical team in Waukegan Victory Hospital. Please pass on to firefighter Jacoby and firefighter Rao a heartfelt thank you for a job well done. Mr. Anthony Giltner, Waukegan, Illinois." Mr. Giltner, we have done so. We want to thank you for the comments, thanking our officers. We're proud of the work they do. We have a great fire department, very professional, very hardworking, and they care a great deal not about, not only about each other, but about the people in this city. So, we're very honored to have them in our service. So, thank you very much. That, I believe, ends the mayor's comments. You know, if I could, just one moment, Mr. Clerk? All right. Well, if you would all bear with me for a moment, before going to audience time, we have some committee positions that we have to fill. And we have two reappointments and one new appointment to the Waukegan Public Library. So, item A, which is a motion to reappoint Jacqueline Herrera Jerron and Myra Gaetan Morales to the Waukegan Public Library and to appoint Jerry Aguilera also to the Waukegan Public Library. If I could ask for a motion from Lisa May and Ralph Rivera? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your service. We will be doing more and more appointments over the next about 60 days. We've received a lot of responses to our requests for resumes and requests to serve, so we'll be reviewing all of those. And over the next 60 days, we'll be bringing a lot more appointments to you for your review and hopefully for your approval. So, thank you very much. Next, we have audience time. First up is Ms. Joyce Evans. Joyce?
Good evening. It's been said that people come down to the city council and they're always blasting the police department. Well, I'm not here to blast the police department because I've had an encounter with a lot of good officers. And they work with me and I work with them, and we get things done. And I thank, I thank God for them. But I do have some problems and some concerns. That's why I'm here tonight. And my thing is here, at 829 McKellister, we had numerous calls last year. This, just this past summer, we've had five calls there with dogs tied up in the garage. I talked to Susan, and she ordered that the people put barking collars on them. And my problem is here is that I called a police officer down there about a week ago, and the dogs were barking. And when the police officer left, the dogs were still barking. And I asked the officer, "Why are the dogs still barking?" He said, "Well, there's nothing we can do about them because the man has plenty of water, the dogs are tied up in the garage, and they have plenty of food." I said, "But that's not the ordinance." And he said, "Well, there's nothing I can do." So, he left, so the dogs barked all weekend. So, just this past week, matter of fact, it was June 20th, I called the police again. An officer, Drexler came and Sheriff Commander Walker, he came down. And they went over there and they talked to the man, and they heard the dogs barking. And next thing I know, they went two doors over, and they asked the people there, "Are the dogs bothering you? Are they bothering, is it bothering them?" And the people told them, "No, they're not, they're not bothering me." The thing of it is, no, they don't bother them because they got dogs, their dogs bark, and they're friends. So, no, they're not going to tell them that. And it doesn't make sense for the police officers to ask them that. It's the ordinance. Just do the ordinance. And another thing was, the plane, let me see, wait one. Okay, another officer came, I was calling him, "Guys, loud music on 9th and Lincoln." And it took about an hour to get that situation under control. You could hear them all the way from Lincoln to McKellister. And they said that they had a permit to play loud music. And so, when one of the residents called me, I said, "No, you call Sam and ask Sam what's going on." When they called Sam, Sam told them they did not have an ordinance to play loud music. They had an ordinance to have a soundproof building. So, but it took forever to get the police to write a ticket, so I'm going to court with that. But it shouldn't be like I have to do something like that. And the next thing was our alleys. And, no, the other thing was, one of the police officers asked me one night, he told me, he said, "Ms. Evans," he said, "You made about five or six calls the other night." He said, "What's the problem? You ride around looking for music, loud noise?" I said, "No, officer." I said, "I don't have time for that." I said, "I just don't have time to do something." I said, "I'm almost 70 years old, and I can find a lot of things to do, you know, besides rock, ride around looking for loud music." So, what happened is, after I told him what happened, then he said, "Okay, I'm sorry." I was on my way home en route. There was, it was going on. I didn't want to get all the way home like I always do, get in bed, and then I got to get back up. So, en route home, they were playing loud music. I called the police. Then, when I turned the corner, they were there. Then, I went that way. So, it was about five calls I made. But the thing of it here is, why would an officer say something like, to me like that? That's an ordinance. Just go do what you got to do. And my last thing is, what are we going to do about the weeds? The weeds are turning into bushes. And one, two houses behind me is where my mom used to live. My sister, in 1973 it was, she got killed and stuffed in my mom's garage. I sit in this alley right now, and I'm looking at all these bushes. Now, see, was a guy doing something in a bush just next door to me, and I'm trying to find out what he was doing. He stayed back there a long time, and I put my light on him, then he stopped doing whatever he was doing. But the thing of it is, it's not safe in those alleys with all those bushes, plus your cars is getting scratched, they're going all out in the alley. So, my thing is here, are they going to do anything with those alleys this summer?
To be honest with you, it's very unlikely we'll do a whole lot. We just don't have the funding to do certain things. But if I, let me talk with Tom Haggerty, and we'll give you a call back on that. But I want to say, if I could, one thing in regards to that. We all know that this city's resources are extremely, are scarce. And we fight with these property owners, whether they're banks, mortgage companies, whatever it is, constantly about this. We are looking at taking a slightly different tact on it, kind of something that was done before that was successful, that didn't actually involve the city. And we're hoping that maybe this will be able to get going and get some, to get some effects. But it's not going to happen overnight. I asked weeks ago, because I'm having some of the same problems right on either side of me, one door to the north, two doors to the south. What my wife and I do is, we just got tired of messing around with it. We get our lawnmower and we cut the lawn. We get the weed whacker out, and we whack down the weeds, at least in the front where it's an issue. Again, I just ask all the people in the neighborhoods to give this some thought and to be part of the solution to help us get through this time. And if you have a weed whacker, if you have a lawnmower, and if you have the time to do it, to take maybe 20 minutes or half an hour every couple of weeks, and kind of go in and help address the situation. It's not the answer you want. I know that. But it's about the only answer that I have to give you right now, given our situation. We'll keep working. We'll keep pushing these property owners with the best resources that we have. But I can't tell you that I can solve this problem for you overnight. It's going to take time.
Isn't the owner responsible for cutting behind their house?
I, you are absolutely right that they are. I don't disagree with you. But if the owner's not doing it, if the property is empty, if no one has taken responsibility, if the owner's not doing it and we issue a citation, then they have to come in and, you know, either pay the fee, the fine, or they come in for the hearing. But at the same time, we can't go back there every day. We just don't have the manpower to do it right now. We're down to basically one or two people doing the majority of all of this work, whereas before, it was many more than that. And they're stretched thin. We get calls about this. We get calls about businesses that are having problems. It's all over the city. It is of the times. But the thing I would ask you is to, we'll do our best to work with you with what we can. But for you as a resident of that area, is to talk to some of your neighbors and say, "Look, could we all maybe once every couple of weeks get out there and do something to take some of our destiny into our own hands and clean some of these messes up?" Because in the end, ultimately, you know, without our resources, that's where it's going to come, what it's going to come down to.
Okay, one more thing is, that is, when you try to talk to your neighbors, even if I did get some kids and go over there, then I'm a troublemaker, or I'm on their property, and it just goes into something. That's why I came to the city, see about getting help, because it's really bad. The weeds are really seven and six feet high. As a matter of fact, on McKnight's property, it's going, it's got connected to the trees. And it's bad. It's really bad in those alleys.
Could I ask you, did the person living in this home actually tell you they didn't want you to cut their weeds for them?
I did it before, and they, oh, they, I was, a whole lot of names, I wouldn't say. Yes. And matter of fact, they own a house on Park, Washington Park, beautiful home, look like it's in Lake Forest. I brought a picture down here before. But this property down here, they don't care.
Well, we do our best to keep up with it. I don't, I don't have a simple answer for you right now, and I know I don't have one that will satisfy you, other than we just keep using our resources as best we can. We're spread across the entire city. This isn't just First Ward, it's across all the wards. Seventh Ward is getting to be a problem. Sixth Ward is an issue. It's Third, Fourth, everyone's got it. And given the fact that we're down to 45% of our workforce, we're doing the best we can with what we have. But I'll talk to, you know, I'll talk to Dave Marion and ask him to make sure it's on the list. Why don't you, you were talking, was that 829 McKellister? Is that the property that you're referring to? Or is that a different property?
No, it's, I'm 829, that's two houses over.
Okay, give my office a call tomorrow, and Isabel will be back in. Let her know what the addresses are. We'll give it to Dave, and he'll get it in his queue, but it won't get done immediately. But, you know, we have to work our way back towards it.
Okay, I talked to two of the aldermen here. This is my last thing. I talked to two of the aldermen here, and I was asking them, "What is, what is the notification for animal control, I mean, animal dog, the new ordinance you guys have made? How do you get this notified?" They told me newspaper. Well, most of the people that have these dogs don't read the newspapers.
No, they don't, but we're left to not very many ways of getting this out. It's not the, you know, we can't mail something to every person in the city because of the cost of doing that. But we might be able to, maybe we can get something in the water bill or something along those lines. Let us take a look and see what we can do to help get that info out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. We appreciate everything you do. It's not easy, I know that. Mr. Joe Schmidt. And Joe, if you could give us your address, please.
Joe Schmidt, 446 North Sheridan Road in Waukegan. Good evening, Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Here tonight to talk about the beach and the things that have been going on here since the council gave us permission to operate the beach. Some days, we've removed as many as 65 bags of trash and debris weighing approximately 300, 600 pounds. Our workers have been down there diligently. We've had some rough spots, some hot days where we just can't get people down there, but things have smoothed out. We've worked with Tom Haggerty and Dave Motley. The city has donated or loaned to us the use of an ATV so we can get up and down the beach now and get the actual beach area much cleaner. The concert series has been going very well. We had two concerts so far, both of which, one had 165 people and one had 180 people at. We're having another concert this Saturday, July 7th, Lorraine and the Maxwell Street Blues Band. We also, this Friday, kind of the day after, Thursday, I'm sorry, the day after the 4th of July, we expect a heavy, heavy usage of the beach. So, we've organized a cleanup, Waukegan ants, friends of Waukegan Beach, former inmates striving together, and students from Northeastern Illinois University Criminal Justice Program are going to be down there. And we'd like to invite everybody from the city, the alderman, the mayor, come down. We'll have the beach concession stand open. There'll be free hot dogs and sodas for anybody who wants to stop by and help clean up the beach. We'll be down there at 9:00 a.m. with shirts on, buckets ready to go. And again, we thank the city council, and we're doing our best we can to maintain the beach and make it attractive for all the residents of Waukegan to come and visit.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate everything that FISHT is doing, as well as the partnerships that you've created. You've made a real difference. You really have. So, thank you very much. Next is Violet Ricker.
I'll talk slowly, sorry. My name is Violet Ricker, and I live at 203 West Water Street. I'm also the director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. I'd like to begin by also thanking FISHT. They are doing tremendous work at the beach, and we were almost clapping in our seats there for all the great work that they've been doing. The beach really does look great, and we appreciate all the hard work that goes into protecting Waukegan's greatest asset there. I just want to give you guys a couple events to put in your calendars that are happening in downtown Waukegan in July. All right, Larry, Alderman Tempest has his out. First, I'd like you to turn to July 14th. That will be Scoop Unplugged. We are trying to continue the tradition with the business owners this year in promoting the former Scoop the Loop and Scoop in Genesee tradition of bringing cars to downtown Waukegan that day. So, we invite everybody to join us from 3:00 until 9:00, and to bring your classic cars down or any kind of cars you'd like and enjoy our restaurants. The following week is Art Walk, July 21st, and then the week after that is July 28th. That is our fifth annual wine and art stroll. It's a fundraiser for Main Street and also a great way to get in and check out some businesses you might not have seen. This year, we're encouraging all of our participating locations to offer some type of art in which you can get involved. So, some people will be teaching classes, some people will have interactive improv. There's going to be some dance lessons at Rhythm Academy of Dance and some really great stuff. So, you can purchase your tickets on the Main Street website, which is waukegammainstreet.org for $15, or all of our board members have them available for sale. So, you can meet me or any of our board members to purchase tickets for that. And finally, I just want to invite everybody who's coming downtown into the lakefront for the 4th of July fireworks this Wednesday to stop at a downtown restaurant beforehand and grab something to eat. We'll have a lot of people down there, and we'll have our Main Street volunteers passing[1712.03] We'll have a lot of people down there, and we'll have our Main Street volunteers passing out information, again, like we did in the 4th of July parade, at the actual fireworks for all of these events that we have coming up. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Violet. And you did actually breathe twice during that entire presentation, so thank you, we appreciate that. Because I kind of find myself holding my breath while you're doing it, and I feel a little dizzy once in a while, so thank you. Good work, though. Mr. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. Founded Black Abolition Movement for the Mine and National Action Network of Lake County. I concur and I agree with Ms. Evans. We do have some good officers on the force. One particular officer, excuse me, I would say there was one particular officer, few months back, well, maybe, I think it was last season, he had a young man in the squad car, and he was about to take him to jail for theft. But the officer stopped in front of our organization, and instead of taking that young man to jail, he dropped him off to me in front of the building. And he told that young man, "I'm turning you over to Mr. Blanks. I think he's a good," he told the young man, "This is a good man, and I think you'll do good in his care and under his guidance." I appreciate that. I want to find out that officer's name, and if he's listening, I hope he'll make himself known, so we can acknowledge him and keep him encouraged to do things like this. He dropped a young man off, and at that particular point in time, we was outside selling t-shirts, doing our fundraisers and things for the organization, and immediately we put that young man to work, selling t-shirts, letting him know there's a different way, and that he don't have to steal. So I'll find out that young man's, I mean, I'll find out that officer's name. However, I must say, there is still much work, and there's work that needs to be done when it comes to correcting some of the issues in some of the offices that we have. And hopefully, many of you don't look at it when I come down here, that I'm coming here against the city. I would like to think that some of the things that I'm doing, as I said, I want to come here in the spirit of solution, actually work in the best interest of the city. Because there is, as I said before last week, as you re-try to, as you try to re-establish the trust with your citizens, there is no room for lying, untrustworthy officers. That's bad for the city, it's bad for their fellow officers, and it's definitely bad for the city. What you're holding in front of you is, the first time is a picture of the first time that I ever stepped foot inside of a city council's chamber. And that was in 2004, July 2004. And that was in the City of Waukegan City Council chambers. I was summoned here by the city instrumentally through what we know, what we came to know worst as the $500 impoundment. I would like to say, you know, to some of the citizens, and this time I would like to use the audience camera, I would like to say to the citizens out there who do not know, because it was buried in the back of the newsstand amongst the ads, whether intentional or unintentional, I don't know. But I think it was a very important issue, which many people's lives was affected by, for it to be buried in the back of the paper without so much even as a caption on the front of the page. But to the best interests of the citizens, I'm pleased to know that in this June, this month of July of 2012, that we were able to come to some terms of a settlement agreement regarding that issue. And I'm really hoping that the city can move forward. And one of the reasons it can move forward in a productive and constructive way in its relationship with its citizens. I don't ever want to see the city deteriorate and degenerate back into the pits of hell, the financial pits of hell, which it is still trying to dig its way out of, based on a bunch of lies and falsehood and deceit and unfair enforcement of the law that took place under the $500 impoundment. That is why every time that I find out there's an officer that is lying, being untrustworthy, being deceitful, I'm going to find myself here. Not as a bad thing, but as a good thing, because you all cannot afford that, and we as the taxpayer and citizens, we can't afford to have officers who would lie and be deceitful. Many of the things under the $500 impoundment where people cars was taken, or the so-called $500 impoundment ordinance, because as Dr. Martin Luther King teaches, any law that is unfair enforcement is no law at all. There was lies like someone didn't turn their signal lights on properly, or didn't come to a complete stop, or things like improper lane use allegedly. So these are the basis of the lies in which took this city into the financial ruins that it almost happened. So when I came here last week to explain to you all about what took place on Bevadere with those officers, where the pit bull got off the leash, ran into a park filled with children and citizens, the Bevadere Park, basically you put children's lives in danger and the people that was there. Well, even worse than that, the biggest problem that I had with that issue is the fact that, as I said, when I approached the officers to ask them about what was going on there and what was SOP, they basically lied to me and basically told me that the dog jumped out of the car. And so I had a problem with that, because my thing is, if you would lie, if you would lie on a dumb beast who can't speak for himself, then what would you do as a police officer? If you shot somebody in an unjustified manner, would you lie to cover up your actions? We do know that we have had those problems.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on.
No.
What's the point of order?
Beyond three minutes?
Okay.
We hadn't set a timeframe on this, but I was just about to ask.
Way beyond three minutes.
Okay, respectfully, respectfully and fairly, sir, you didn't say that on the first person who came up and had good things to say. So we're going to be fair about this, so we won't have it. Thank you, all right, all right. Okay, so I, okay, I will respect that, okay? But anyway, as I was saying, in the best interest of this city, you, the citizens, and the city council, you cannot afford to have officers that are on the street that are lying. And after you investigate what I have said, and what I brought before this city council, and you find that it's true, you need to deal with that officer or those officers any and every time, so this city don't go back into the decadent, decaying situation that it's just trying to dig its way out of. Thank you for your time and your attention, Alderman Neal.
Thank you very much. That's okay. Let's, all right, let's, that's it, we're done. All right. Next, we have, we don't have any resolutions and proclamations before us, we have committee, we have minutes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2012, regular meeting and executive session minutes and special meeting minutes. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Valco. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next, we have committee reports and motions. Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met on Monday, June 25th, 2012. The first item I have has to do with the renaming of the current Development Commission, and we're going to call them the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's only a name change, there's no other changes to this ordinance, it's simply a name change. There's been some confusion. We have another group called the Development Review Board. There's often confusion between the two groups of people. So Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, renaming the Development Commission to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Do we have any comments? Seeing no comments, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
My next item, zoning calendar number 2367. The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, allowing a conditional use permit for a daycare center at 2744 Grand Avenue, with conditions outlined by staff, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Do we have any comments? Seeing no comments, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
The next item, amending Chapter 21 of the Waukegan City Code, I'd like to request to have this item held over.
Okay, we have the motion by Alderman May. Do we have a second?
Second.
No second?
Second. We need a second, I'll second it.
Don't need it.
If we need a second, just, if we don't, we don't.
I would prefer to take that as a motion. So I have a motion seconded by Alderman Moizio.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. This will be, I'm sorry.
No.
No. Well, we have the no by Alderman Bedling. The item will be returned back to committee for further review and discussion, and then hopefully come back to us in a couple of weeks.
It's just being held over. I don't think we're going to bring it back to committee, but maybe, no, but maybe we, I just wanted it held over till the next council meeting, so we have a chance to discuss some of the items we were discussing with the city clerk and yourself before.
And Alderman Bedling as well.
And Alderman Bedling would certainly be present at that meeting.
Okay, yeah, we're not trying to undermine anything, we just want some additional discussion here.
Absolutely.
Okay, understood. Alderman Bedling will be back, we will be back to you on this.
Next, next council meeting.
Okay, yes, thank you, Alderman May.
Okay. Next item. This is just a cleanup of the city code. There's a chapter regarding elections that was very outdated, where the city had some kind of control over how elections were performed in this city. So we're just cleaning up the ordinance book, and this, elections are governed by state statutes. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, repealing and replacing Chapter 8 elections of the Waukegan City Code, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom. I'm sorry, Alderman Tempest, you wish? Do you mind? Alderman Tempest, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
The next item has to do with an ordinance repealing and replacing Section 1134D, excessive noise. What the changes that we've made to this ordinance is an increase in the fines for excessive noise. You are cited for excessive noise between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, the fee will now be $150. If it's between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, the fee is being increased from $300. Currently, our fees are 75, 150, and 300 for three different timeframes. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, repealing and replacing Section 1134D, excessive noise of the Waukegan City Code, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Bedling. Any questions? Yes, Alderman Newsom?
The question I have, and I guess the police will probably use discretion come Wednesday for the holiday, 4th of July, I know people will probably be playing music. Should you get any calls regarding that, how would we handle that? Because I know that we have, you know, this ordinance on the book, and I'm sure that it's going to be going on between, you know, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10 PM.
It takes 10 days to behave it.
Ma'am, as in all laws and ordinances, the officers do have a certain amount of discretion in the enforcement of them, taking into account the circumstances and situations. So I will say on holidays, often discretion is utilized, but if it is a situation where it is bothering a resident, we by all means try to tell them to turn it down. When we get involved, particularly on the holidays, we'll tell them to turn it down, it's getting late, or something to that circumstance. And then they don't comply the second time, then we do go ahead and issue the violation. So we do give them a chance in the holidays, if that kind of answers your question.
Alderman Moizio.
While I have Chief up here, if I understand it right, in committee, if it's a house or a stationary situation, it can be, the ticket can be written and come to our adjudication court. If it's a moving violation, the car has to go across the street, am I right on that, Chief, or no?
No, no, it doesn't have to. It does not have to.
All of it can come to our adjudication court?
Yes, or to the, or to the branch court.
Because I think, Mayor, we had a problem before where we were writing, I mean, they were going to other court, and the judges just would not, they would just not withhold the law, and I'd rather have it come here where we can, you know, be a lot tougher with it, instead of going in front of a judge where he says, oh, you know, give him the benefit of the doubt. I mean, we're increasing this fee, fine, because we, all of us up here understand that this is a nuisance, we get a lot of calls about it, it bothers everybody up here, I'm sure everybody in the audience, and we want to put some teeth into it. So I would like it to come here, not bog up branch court, if we could.
If I might interject, you know, our prosecutor, Kaderko, has done a great job in establishing a relationship with a judge in the system that has been very aggressive in making sure that these fines stick. And he's been very satisfied with the fact that we've gotten good results out of it. But it is something that I think that we have to kind of balance out as to how much we load into this room and what we send over there. But if I could, Alderman Conken, if I could just say one thing real quick, you know, from my standpoint, if I get a call, I'm, you know, one, I'm going to always come down on the side of the person who has a right to live in a quiet environment. I have to be honest with everybody, that's what I come down on the side of. If you want to play loud music, you know, what I did at my house, because I like to watch movies, and I play the Beatles and stuff, and I play it loud, because that's what we grew up with. But I put it in the basement, and you don't hear it outside, you don't hear it across, it doesn't bother the neighbor. And it's something that, you know, for those young people and folks that want to listen to loud music, the best place to put those speakers is downstairs, because then it doesn't get into the house quite as readily as it does. Although some of the ultra-low frequencies can pass between basements, it's not like it is if it's in the open air. But I do come down on the side of people who have the right to live in a quiet environment. That's first and foremost, I truly believe that. And while we rely on our officers' discretion, I think that they sort of tend that way, too, because the first question they ask these folks is, "Please turn it down, so that it doesn't disturb your neighbors." That's the goal. And it really is something that I feel very strongly about, and I have to be honest with you, when I was young, I was absolutely guilty of doing this, more than on one occasion. And I had a neighbor come by and say, "You know, turn the damn thing down, or I'm going to call the Denver Police on you." I turned it down. It was a lot cheaper than paying a fine in court. It was easier to deal with. Put on the headphones, or put them in the basement if you can. Alderman Conken.
Hi, I just have a question for the committee. Just as an example, I had an older lady in my ward call about loud music late one night, and she was very tolerant until 10:00. She didn't make the phone call until 10:00. So I guess my question is just, what was the reasoning for the, I realize it may be easier by knocking it down to two different time zones, but why 8:00 to 8:00, and why not say 10:00 to 6:00, when, like I said, because this little lady was, you know, everybody was reasonable about the fact there was a party outside, but after 10:00, that was enough. But 8:00 seems kind of early, especially in the summertime, the sun's still out. So I was just curious as to why you picked the 8:00 to 8:00 timeframe.
Actually, that's how the ordinance was presented to us, and it wasn't questioned in judiciary. No one questioned it, as you're questioning it now, Alderman Conken. The alderman that worked with Corporation Council to redraft the ordinance, they worked on those numbers together, and no one questioned in judiciary, didn't even come up.
Could I make a suggestion as to probably why I think this works? Is it gives us the opportunity to have the leverage, if something is just completely out of control, and it's not 10:00, to really get it to quiet down, and have that authority to say, "You know what? It doesn't matter, this is too loud, it's intruding in your neighbors' houses, it's ruining their evening, they can't rest, you have people." And you know, while we have a holiday, a midweek holiday is the tough one, because everybody's going to get up and have to go to work the next day, by and large. So we have to keep that in mind of our neighbors, that, you know, people may have to get up at 4:00 in the morning, while you're still out there at 10 or 11:00, making a whole lot of noise. So, you know, I think that it gives us that leverage, gives the officers some discretion some discretion to really address a really out-of-control situation.
Thank you.
Alderman Bedling?
This evolved from North Chicago's ordinance, which is, targets cars, and they hooked the cars, $500 fine, and they hooked the cars for loud music. Imagine that. Talked to some of my colleagues up here, and some thought that that was unfair, so we came up with the 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, $150, 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, $300, and that includes homes also, so. But some municipalities do tow the cars for offenses. Thank you, Alderman, thank you.
Okay. I'll just go on the record, I'd be-
Yes, Alderman.
I'd be for towing cars.
Well, we'll work with what we got right now. So, we have the motion, it has been made by Alderman May, and seconded by Alderman Bedling, and we are looking for a roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. The next ordinance we have is ordinance amending Chapter 2 and repeal Section 2-101. This is a duplicative type of ordinance, it's regarding bonds covering certain employees of the city. Since the time that this ordinance was written, we are covered by errors and emissions insurance for these type of matters, and therefore, we are presenting to repeal this particular section. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 2 Administration and repealing Section 2-101, Bonds of the Waukegan City Code, and I so move. We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
The eyes have it, thank you. Next item, a release to option, of option to purchase. This has to do with an option that was executed between OMC and BRP Bombardier U.S., for an option for BRP to purchase a parcel of land, and the city took over the parcel from OMC, and BRP no longer wishes to have an option to purchase that property, therefore, we are going to release it. So, we have a, Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the release and termination of option to pur, to purchase as presented, and I so move. We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The eyes have it. I just have one more comment, Mayor, at the last Judiciary Committee, for those that were not at Committee of the Whole, we did discuss, and we voted to repeal the Chapter 14-121 and Chapter 15-46, which prohibits video gaming in the city of Waukegan. So, the committee did approve to draft an ordinance repealing the ban on video gaming, and we'll be moving forward and working with staff to write the ordinance, and hopefully have it presented either at the next council meeting, at the latest, the first council meeting in August. Thank you, thank you for all the hard work. That's all just information, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you very much. Next is Alderman Moiseo, Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, grant permission to draft specifications and advertise forbids for the exterior painting and maintenance of the exterior windows at the Genesee Theater. This project is eligible to be funded with TIF funding, funds are available in line item 238-1238-26489, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Item B, grant permission to draft specifications and advertise forbids for the installation of new washrooms at 216-220 Clayton Street. This project is eligible to be funded with TIF funding, funds are available for this project in line item 238-1238-26489, that is the building inside the parking garage, if anybody is wondering, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. That concludes your business?
Yes, sir, we're done.
Thank you very much, appreciate all the hard work. Next, we have Economic Development and Genesee Theater Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Your Honor, we came to order today about 5:06, excuse me, 5:05 PM. Item A, extend the contract with Development Concepts, DCI Incorporated, through December 31st, 2012, in the amount of $55,000, from line item 238-1238-24589. And as you know, during the past year, DCI has worked with the city's economic development team to identify and start to package development projects to the downtown and lakefront development areas. There have been several notable accomplishments that have been generated by this team during this period, and everyone should have received those accomplishments. Not going to read all of them, but they helped negotiate and commence the art space project, McClendon Residential Project, the South Lakefront, the South Sheridan Residential Project, Academy of Square, they're drafting the new TIF policy, which is outdated, we need to update that TIF policy, and miscellaneous projects such as, you know, include the Genesee Theater, College of Lake County, the YMCA, and other potential hotel development. This is going to be funded, this extension will be funded with a portion of the monies left in the TIF prior to its, to be closed, out earlier this year. So, I so move to extend the contract with Development Concepts Incorporated through December 31st, 2012, in the amount of $55,000, from line item 238-1238-24589, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions? Alderman Tempest?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's for six months' work, that's Higby, I believe, his group. Do we, he started in the very beginning, do we not have staff that could do this work?
Actually, we don't have, our Economic Development Director is gone.
That's right.
We are, you know, the people that are doing this are all doing this, and almost, while I wouldn't say ad hoc, but it's a bit spread thin, and Mike has been a great deal of help to us, I, you know, just on the art, art space project alone, he saved us big money. And he was a tough negotiator, and we really, because honestly, right towards the end, that got a little dicey.
Right, I believe that.
Yeah, and, but he helped guide us through it.
Okay.
You know, the project on the south, the South Sheridan Road project, now, he is not charging us for work on that. That's something that we're not, we're not being charged for, because he has an interest in that project, but he is directing us where, how to go, how to solve some problems. In fact, we will be going with our lobbyist to meet with the Director of Ida, as well as others, to help us with some of the funding on that project.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you.
Item B, award annual grant to support downtown development and city membership in Waukegan Main Street, in the amount of $19,700, from line item 100-103024639, 639, excuse me. Main Street has done a wonderful job, working with the businesses and promoting events with, such as art walks, and, and all the events that they've been promoting downtown, so they've done a wonderful job, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. And we have questions, Alderman Tempest, please.
What did, what did they get last year? Did they get 25 last year?
20. 20.
20 last year? And now we're down to what, 19?
It's close.
Well, it's close. I know they're working very, very hard, they brought in some more help, and I can see Waukegan getting less money, the total, but concentrating in the downtown business area, I really think they need a little more help at this time. When going gets tough, you, sometimes you little, need a little more help than what we're willing to give here, and I would, I would surely like to see them get a little more, if we could possibly fit it in, in the budget. I don't know if we have any there or not, but I do support them mentally, I haven't been down like I should sometimes, but I do know the job they're trying to do, and they work very, very hard volunteering and so forth, and to put them at the point where I, I feel they're kind of financially wiggle-wobble, it's, it's not enough wiggle-wobble in their budget to really have enough funds to really do the job. And I don't know if it's possible to give them another $4,000, $5,000, to try to keep it going, and I don't care if you steal it from the other one.
Budget is awful tight, Alderman. It really is, I think this is an amount we could all live with. And I, you know, I don't, I try to help Main Street when I can, and, you know, I've, I've kind of offered from my expense account to, to provide them with some resources here and there, and I have to tell you, it, it, the, the volunteer base that is down there working with them, if anybody's driven downtown in the last week or two, and seen all the flowers that have gone up, watched all the people walking with watering cans, really making an impact on what's happening, it, it really has, it has done a great deal. But before, you know, we close the door on this, I have one person that I have to ask, you know, from the standpoint of the finances, and line items and all of that, our CFO, Tina, I hate to draw you into things, I know, but the question is, as Alderman put it, do we have an extra $5,000 that we can amend this to reflect?
Police dog.
Police dog.
This is the amount that was in the budget. This is the line item, this is a specific line item, this was the amount in the budget. All of the contractual and commodity categories, when the departments submitted all of their budgets, which the departments are, do their own budgets, were cut by 1.5% over the prior year. That's why it's 19,700 versus 20,000. It's completely up to the discretion of the council, if they would like to allocate a different dollar amount, but then we'd have to look back at the budget and transfer funding from another line item.
Could I respectfully ask that we live with this, and we'll do, all, all do our best, maybe when we can, to help them, I mean, they're, they are a 501(c)(3), anybody can donate money to help, or donate sweat equity. And it's something that I am concerned about going back in and having to revisit the buzzet, the buzzet, the bu, the budget. Alderman May?
Thank you, Mayor, and Tina. I'd just like to suggest that there's like little things that all of us can do, like every Alderman on the council could become a member of Main Street. I know some of us already are, it's a really nominal fee, and it's annual, I don't even know, $50 a year.
60.
25, or maybe like 50 for a family. I mean, there's little things we can do to help, we can, first of all, join, and like the mayor said, volunteer, or encourage, if you know people, to join Main Street, or businesses in your ward, to join Main Street. They are the biggest volunteer base in this city, and do phenomenal job with very little funds. So, I would just like to encourage everyone to join Main Street, and consider attending their fundraisers. They have two major fundraisers every year, it's the Mardi Gras and the Lunch with the Mayor, that's where they earn most of their money, and then also through membership. So, everyone up here can make a difference just by joining, and we could at least make up the difference from what we cut last year. That's all I have. Alderman Cunningham?
Your Honor, as much as I appreciate all the comments that are being said, and I know Alderman May, his intentions are very, very well, one, is in trying to help Main Street, but I'd like to speak on Main Street from a marketing perspective. Volunteer's fine, but in our world of today, when you're marketing a city such as ours, a community such as ours, the investment such as ours in our downtown redevelopment of Lakefront, $19,000 is just not going to cut it. I don't care how many volunteers you do it, if we're planning and want that downtown to be what we want it to be, what we envision it to be, not just today, but 20 years from now, we must start now. Alderman Tempest has said it best. Tina can find the dollars if we want to invest in our downtown. You get what you pay for, and they're not just helping out with volunteers, they're marketing the city of Waukegan. If you give them $50,000 for the size of this city, that is still not enough to market a city such as ours. We are the ninth largest city in the state of Illinois, the largest on the North Shore. You're going to put $20,000 into marketing that? You can't. It, it ain't going to happen. So, you can get what you pay for, we can try these little small things, but if our city don't support it, you can't ask any other businesses, you can't ask any other developers, they must see that we have a stake in this. And have a stake means ponying up. Ponying up means stop trying to tell other folks to do what we do best. Give them folks the tools that they can be successful, it's not live with what you got. Don't complain, don't talk about it, don't say we ain't doing it, this is what it takes to be successful. Now, 20,000, fine, if you want to do that, that's fine with you, but I'm giving you the down and dirty, you can't do it with $19,000. Don't even try, don't entertain a thought, because it's a waste of our time. Give it to them, be happy, move on. But if you're going to market our downtown as the Mecca of the North Shore, then do it right. These folks have done more things in a matter of two to three years, from a marketing standpoint, with $20,000. Give them 50,000, see what happens. You have 2,000 people in your downtown on a every weekend, and we'll get that money back because of what? Gross receipts. That's the way I'm thinking. Now, that's my opinion, like it or love it, that's just the way it is, but don't insult their intelligence by telling me $20,000 is enough, because it isn't. Not to market the ninth largest city in the state of Illinois. Take a look at Aurora, take a look at the Joliet, they put $200,000 in their marketing program. It is what it is. I'm not here, I'm not trying to be an advocate for them, I'm only giving you what is in the best interest of our city, between Genesee, or Genesee between Grand and Belvedere, these folks have done a great, great job, and, and they invited the business owners there, but you can't continue to tell them that this is what it takes in order to be suc, you can't. Not if you want to do it right. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Alderman.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that way increases to $25,000.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion in a second to amend Item B, to move the grant amount from $19,700 to $25,000. Before, if, if we could, let's hold our powder just for a moment. I want everybody to look at Item C, and take a look at it, read through it, because what Alderman Cunningham was talking about actually is addressed in Item C. The marketing that is done for Main Street is a lot of times, in fact, many times, a joint marketing effort from the city of Waukegan using David Motley, as well as Main Street. These are things that are done together. So, it's, anybody up here knows that I have been the biggest supporter of Main Street since I've taken this job. I, I painted, I've, I've done whatever, I've been there. And I'm not trying to put them in a position where they can't function, but from a promotional public relations standpoint, working through David's office with Main Street, as well as this next item, I think will get us closer to what we want to do, but Alderman Cunningham is right, we have not been spending the amount of money that I see small towns like Paducah, Kentucky, other small ones that outspend us 10 to 1 sometimes, and that's something we'll have to look at for next year's budget. This year, this is where we are. So, I would respectfully ask, please, let us go forward with this item, let us do the next item, I think we'll get the bang for the buck that we're looking for, and we'll get more marketing and public relations. If I could respectfully request that the Alderman withdraw his request to amend, so that we can keep it as it is, and then have money to be able to spend on the broader marketing efforts that are done through the Lake County Bureau of Tourism.
Are you looking at me?
Yes, sir.
You don't want to get me going, you really don't.
No, no, not trying to get you going, I just asked if you would respectfully-
I'll get wound up, and respectfully, I look at my $8,000 a month lobbyist, I can sure use, I'm sure we paid them to come up here today, we found money to do that, I read all that stuff on the internet, I didn't need them to come here. I, I just think this kind of money in Waukegan downtown will be wisely spent, and I think we can find the other $5,300 somewhere. Cut your lobbyist short one month, you got it right there, there's ways to cut, and I'm always willing to cut. But I look at the downtown, I look at what they're trying to do, and I personally haven't supported them as much as I should, but I've been a little different situation, it was a little more difficult for me, but I believe in the downtown, I believe they're working so hard, and they're making such good progress. At this time, I think they need a little lift, a little push, to say, hey, you're At this time, I think they need a little lift, a little push to say, hey, you're doing a good job, keep the volunteers coming, let's keep it going and find the money somewhere else. There's ways to find money in a budget, you can shift it around and reappropriate. And I surely believe twenty-five, I probably would have went a little less than that, but I got the nod from some other people for twenty-five. And the votes are here, your honor, to pass it.
Okay, so the motion is to amend to the item to twenty-five thousand dollars. We have the motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by, I believe, by Alderman Valco, if I heard correctly. Roll call, please, on the motion to amend.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
I'd like to explain my answer, my vote is no. Yeah, my vote is no, simply because of the fact that we sit up here as a council and we tell our policemen, we tell our firemen, we tell our Public Works, we tell everybody that there's no money anywhere in the budget. And all of a sudden, we can look for five grand and find it somewhere. It's nothing personal, Main Street, I agree, you do a great job, but the budget was set at that number because that was what was available. Nobody else is getting pay raises. People are even, as the mayor said, we've had staff cuts. Unless the mon-- unless we find the money first somewhere else, my vote is going to be no. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
I love you, Ricker, but I can't. No.
Alderman Newsom.
My vote would be no, and I would have to go along with Alderman Conkin. I support Main Street as well, but we went back to all the other departments and made them go back and cut another one and a half percent. So I don't think it's fair to the other departments to tell them that they have to cut and then we find some money someplace else. I mean, if we're going to do that, find some money for all the other departments and raise theirs back up to the original fee. So my vote has to be no.
Alderman Tempest.
My vote is aye. I believe it's crucial, crucial, that we keep the downtown association going and expand it for a basis to improve Waukegan.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Last year, we were here doing the same thing for Lake County and some of us had questions what they were doing for us. And they just brought in two to two and a half million dollars for our advertisement and we gave them twenty-five thousand. I'm sure that downtown isn't going to bring in that kind of money, but anything that I personally can do to help as well as this council, you've got my vote. I vote aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Well, first of all, before I vote, I know, what is it, during the appropriations hearings, you know, we had asked, personally, I had asked to strike seventy-five thousand dollars for Swalco. Now, is there a possibility that some of that money that we struck for Swalco, can that go towards, something go towards this? I just wanted to know where we would possibly, you know, get money out to help.
The Swalco line item was thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand, excuse me.
And for the direction of the council, it had already been reallocated to street paving.
Okay, yes. All righty, thank you very much. Now personally, you know, I support, you know, Main Street. I mean, I gave a percentage of my salary donated to Main Street to make up the three hundred dollars, you know, so they can go up to twenty thousand. But it's not up to three hundred, I think it's, I'm taking out whatever, whatever I did for Art Walk, that's what I wanted to do for Waukegan Main Street. Now, I've, you know, we sat in, we discussed this the last time and, you know, one of the things that, you know, and I respect Main Street and I respect the work that you do, but when you come to ask for more money, the financial reporting, I expected to be a little, a little more, you know, professional. I don't mean to make it sound like, I don't want to insult anybody, but, but when you're asking for this kind of money, I expect a little more reporting in regards to the events that you've had, what you're making, what you're spending. I didn't see that in these reports. And I've yet, and I'm still waiting for that report, to be honest with you. I know, you said that two weeks ago. And I haven't received anything yet. But I'd like to see that. I think that's very important when you're asking for money, well, you gotta, I want to see the whole thing. But I know what Waukegan Main Street does down there. And I know you guys work hard at it. And I'm going to support, you know, the five thousand. But I want to see, not just myself, but all the aldermen up here, the breakdowns of these events that you do, what you're spending, what you're, what kind of revenue that you're getting in. If there's losses, how are these losses covered? You know, those type of things, I'd like to see. But I vote aye.
Six to three.
Okay, ayes have it for the amendment. Now, we will take the item before us as amended, so that item B will read, award annual grant to support downtown development and city membership in Waukegan Main Street in the amount of twenty-five thousand from, I'm going to keep the same line item in there because I don't know where else to go at this point, but one hundred, one zero three zero two four six three nine. We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, as amended.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Nope.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Item C, or, excuse me.
Yeah, item C.
Item C, yes. Approve the annual partnership with Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau slash Visit Lake County in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from line item one hundred one oh six zero two four four three. Now, everyone received in their packet some of the accomplishments and how this investment has paid big dividends this past year. I'll read a couple of bullet points, but, you know, you're talking about, especially with working with the Park District, with all the events that they've had since, especially June twenty-fourth to thirtieth, where they attracted eight thousand attendees over at the sports park, Waukegan Sports Park, the national soccer championships. One thousand one hundred hotel rooms were used in the city of Waukegan. It was a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar in economic impact for the city of Waukegan from the overnight visitors. It's an average of about two hundred dollars per person, per night. Plus, you know, other day visitors to the Waukegan Sports Park stopped, may have stopped at local restaurants to eat. So it definitely provided a huge economic boost in the city of Waukegan. Twenty-three groups brought to Waukegan. With these twenty-three groups, an economic impact of six hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars was introduced to the city, was brought into the city. So you're looking at a huge economic impact because of the Lake County Partnership Program, you know, with the city of Waukegan. They're also involved with our websites, publications, sports venue directory, social media marketing, PR editorial coverage, group tour itineraries. So we'll definitely get the bang for the, for the buck. So I so move to approve the annual partnership with Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Visit Lake County in the amount of twenty-five thousand from line item one hundred one oh six zero two four four three, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Do we have any questions? Alderman Beedling.
Can I make a motion to amend this amount to nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have the motion by Alderman Beedling to amend this line item one zero zero one zero six zero two four 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 three from twenty-five thousand to nineteen thousand, say that.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred dollars. Do we have a second?
Before we do that.
Yes, Alderman Rivera.
The fee is twenty-five thousand. That's what the fee, the nineteen thousand seven hundred was not a fee. This is what we're helping Waukegan Main Street with. Now it's twenty-five thousand.
Don't talk over me.
This twenty-five thousand is a fee to belong to the Lake County Partnership Program.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beedling, you wanted to say something, I believe that Dave Motley may want to comment.
I think that's all we can afford.
David, did you want to make any additions to Alderman Rivera's comments on this? It's up to you.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, who's, yeah, Alderman Moiseo.
If I remember right, I was probably against this last year, but if, what I've been told is true, and I did help bring the soccer tournament to, to the park, that's a moneymaker. That's a moneymaker. And it's not just a moneymaker for the Park District by having, charging fees and things like that, but it's a moneymaker for the ancillary businesses. I had some friends who had some daughters that were involved in this, and in fact, one of the teams, they couldn't even get a hotel here, they had to go to Kenosha, because every hotel in Waukegan in the surrounding area was booked. There was no rooms at all, you couldn't get one. Well, I think the Navy had something to do with it, it helped. Usually you can get a room, but when they had this, they couldn't get a room. So, like I said, I was probably against this last year, but if they had a hand in helping get that sports park, these soccer, the soccer tournament that brought all these people. We always talk about economics and one of the things is that you want people to come. You want people to come. You want people to come, because when people come, people spend money. So if they had a hand in that, I'm going to support it this year. If they had a hand in that, and I talked to David and he told me they did, so I'm going to support it this year. Thank you.
Hold on, just one moment, we had Alderman Cunningham and then back to Alderman Beedling.
You know, your honor, the comments that I made earlier about marketing just not, does not apply just to the Main Street. There's a different set of marketing rules that are out there. There is called local marketing, that means those who live within that same geographical area. We have been asked to be a part of the Lake County Marketing, that component. Now, I don't know if everyone understand the scheme of marketing, I'm pretty sure they do, we're intelligent people up here. You have got the, probably the richest county, or one of the richest counties in the state of Illinois. The resources that Mr. Motley, being a director of marketing, is in touch with, just the resources alone on the Lake County Bureau, is that the Lake County Bureau? The Lake County Bureau is more than twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm here to tell you. An example, the company that I'm with, Erie Insurance Company, paid a hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars for ten agents to be a part of a countywide marketing plan. Have their name, their telephone number, a hundred thousand dollars, ten agents. We cannot even entertain a thought of saying what we won't pay for when you're dealing with a county that brings resources to us on a daily basis where our director, director of marketing is in their face every day. He has the, just the mere fact he has that list costs you money. Now, I know it may seem like a lot of money, it may seem like this is not what we should be doing with these dollars, when it, and again, I thought our goal was, and I'm going back to what the goal was from the council set and from the staff and from since I've been an alderman, it was to market the city of Waukegan, not just in a local sense, but throughout the region. That was our goal. Now, if that is our goal, we can't limit our goal by telling them we're going to give you nineteen thousand. In the marketing schemes, that's an insult. Now, either we're going to do this or we're not going to do this. And by slapping the face of the Lake County Bureau of, what is the technical name of it, David? Visit Lake County. But they are part of an overall countywide marketing program, I'm pretty sure everyone saw this book. Just the mere fact our name is mentioned in that book will cost you twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, if you don't want to do it, I got a couple of agents who will help out, we'll put our name in there, and I guarantee you, we'll see the rewards on that. If one, one reservation comes out of that and it fills up the Ramada Inn, it fills up all the Fountain Square Hotels, we have paid for that in one time. So we must be cautious when we doing these things. And twenty-five thousand dollars is just not worth it, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, first Alderman Tempest and Alderman Rivera.
May I ask, direct us to David, if I may?
Yes.
May I direct us to David, if I may? David, how do we come up with the twenty-five thousand? That'd be, do they, have we, haven't we belonged us for some time?
We sure have, we've been members for probably more than eight years at this moment.
Okay, I remember when we first came on.
And our, our community partnership level is at twenty-five thousand dollars, based on our.
How did we come about the twenty-five thousand?
It's our, our price point for the community partnership. Gurnee, well, Lake County is the highest contributor of over a hundred thousand dollars. Gurnee is about fifty thousand dollars. Waukegan is at twenty-five thousand dollars. Libertyville, Lincolnshire, Vernon Hills, all are at the table as well, they're anywhere between fifteen to ten thousand dollars for community partnerships. Overall, there are seventeen community partners in the Visit Lake County, and our overall budget for Visit Lake County is one million six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars with seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand of those dollars coming from grants from the state. So in order for us to be part of this overall effort, we have to be a community partner, otherwise, in all the marketing materials that this organization does, Waukegan is not mentioned whatsoever, because it's not in their best interests to direct traffic to those community partners that are not community partners.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Rivera.
May I ask, David? David?
Yes.
Am I correct by law, in order to pay this twenty-five thousand, is it coming out of the hotel tax?
This twenty-five thousand dollars is, or would be coming out of the hotel motel tax, but that's probably a Tina question?
You can nod yes or no, you don't have to run all the way up. Okay.
When hotel tax was first put in, where municipality could local, could levy a local hotel motel tax, Waukegan has a five percent tax, at that time, it was required that a percentage of that go back into tourism. That was how that law came to be. That state statute has since changed. So in theory, some municipalities tie how much they give to a convention bureau to, to how much hotel tax they come in. We pay this fee. You mentioned Gurnee's fee. Gurnee also shares a large percentage of their hotel tax in addition to the fee that they pay. So there is a hotel tax sharing arrangement in that, in Gurnee. But it's not necessarily tied directly to it anymore. But if you look at our overall hotel tax, this is a very small amount.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Okay? Great. All right. Where are we at on this?
Motion by Beedling to give them nineteen thousand.
To amend, we're waiting for a second, do we have a second to Alderman Beedling's motion? Seeing none, the motion is, dies for a lack of a second. So we will go back to the, the original motion.
The original motion, the original motion reads, approve annual partnership with Lake County Convention and Visitors Bureau slash Visit Lake County in the amount of twenty-five thousand from line item one hundred one zero six zero two four four three, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Item D, oh, excuse me, yes, item D. Approve ordinance renaming the Genesee Theater ticket fee to Genesee Theater Restoration and Operations Fee and allocating the revenue for Genesee Theater operations. This fee, in two thousand and six, remember, we increased this fee to three dollars by the passage of the ordinance zero six zero sixty-two. And that ordinance also provided for allocation of the restoration fee receipts. Changes to this fee, which will assist in clearing, clearly identifying the use of this fee on an ongoing basis. this fee on an ongoing basis. Again, the, the fee will remain at $3, which shall continue to be added to each Genesee Theater admission ticket with a base value of $20 or more. The funds, again, received from this fee shall be allocated towards the Genesee Theater So, the motion will read, approve the ordinance to renaming the Genesee ticket fee to the Genesee Theater Restoration Operations Fee, and allocating the revenue for Genesee Theater operations, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Beedling. Do we have any comments or questions on it?
Your Honor, I do.
Uh, yes, Alderman Cunningham.
I think Tina's going to have to come up for this, because that's where I'm going to direct it to. If you don't mind, Tina. This is better than Zoom with Tina. Question for you, Tina. All right, I noticed the word operations is in there, and the reason we're doing this so we can, I want to make sure I get this, understand this right, we can get a better handle of the total cost of running the Genesee Theater, and correlate that with this, with this fee, is that kind of what we're doing?
The, the recommendation to make this change actually came from the Oversight Committee, I believe. The Restoration Fee has two parts currently, $2 is, well, there's a, there's two parts to the fee. $2 is the Restoration Fee, then there was supposed to be a $1 fee for Police Services. Historically, the $3 has not been, it has been collected, but due to the deficits at the theater, the theaters kept the actual cash to help offset the operational costs, and the city has recorded a receivable, and the receivable, at this point, doesn't appear to be collectible, as the theater operations aren't profitable. So, I believe the thought behind this, since we've been using the $3 to help offset the cost of the theater, to have the ordinance reflect what the practice has been, rather than what the intent originally was of the fee.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not on the Oversight Committee, so I can't really speak, I'm hoping that I'm-
You're right on.
Okay.
You're right on.
All right. I'll talk to you offline. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Question answered? Do we have any other questions? Seeing none? Roll call.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
We have, the eyes have it, thank you.
Hold on, I have one more item, sir. Item-
That would be E.
There's so many letters in here.
It's item E, we had a typo.
It's item E, they have a A in there, but it's item E. Approve of the contract extension with SMG for management of the Genesee Theater through April 20th of 2013, allowing appropriate personnel and representatives to enter with Uline for future operations of the Genesee Theater. As you know, yeah, it should be April 30th, there's, there's another typo, I'm sorry, April 30th. As you know, Uline has been a significant supporter, financial supporter, of the Genesee Theater, allowing us to keep, you know, the theater open over the last fiscal year, absent contributions from the city's general fund. And the reason for this extension, it would give Uline, it'll give them a chance, an opportunity, to put together their legal teams, which is on both sides, for them to get a, a management team in place. They have requested that we extend the contract with SMG under its existing terms through April 30th of 2013. This extension would allow enough time to have all the arrangements made, and allow for a smooth transition to the new operating model. Uline intends to continue its current practice of subsidizing the cost of operating the theater through that time period. Approval of, of the contract extension with SMG for management of the Genesee Theater through April 30th, 2013, and allowing appropriate personnel and representatives to enter negotiations with Uline for future operations of the Genesee Theater, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Newsome. Comments or questions? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye. Thank you, Your Honor, that is it.
Thank you. I have to speak to this, this item before us, but let me confer with Corporation Council for a minute.
I have a real concern about this item before us, because I'm very, very afraid that the can, which has been kicked down the road several times on the operations of the Genesee Theater, Genesee Theater is about to be kicked down the road again. And that ultimately, we are not going to make the decision that is going to lead us to a real solution at the Genesee Theater to bring it into profitability, and that the Genesee Theater will have the type of impact on our downtown and the rest of the city of Waukegan that it was actually promised to have. We're all thankful to Uline for what they've helped us with in the past. There is no doubt about that. But my concern is that what will end up happening is that we will go through this time period again, and we are, already have used up another time period getting to where we are now, and we ended up without any real substantive changes in how the Genesee Theater is being run. We are still closed about 65% of the year. The Genesee Theater bond note is still borne fully by the city of Waukegan as debt service. Up until recently, until we sat down and took the contract apart piece by piece, line by line, the city was rewarding SMG for filling the theater and propping them up when they weren't. I don't feel a comfort level with this, at this moment, where I'm really feeling that Uline will be able to step in and will be willing to put the resources in place that are going to be necessary to take an operation as big as the Genesee Theater and turn it around in a way that is going to help us do the three things that we need to do. One, reduce the city's exposure on the debt service. Two, bring more people into our downtown. And number three, solve once and for all the issue of the management of the theater and the direction that it's going in. The theater has only up until this year made itself so expensive that the majority of the community people who would like to use it have not been able to. And it was up until just recently that that began to occur. So, I know this gets you mad, and I, and I truly do apologize in advance. But as mayor, I cannot see this go through as it stands right now. I will advise you tonight that I will provide, be providing each of you with a written reason why I am going to veto this, and ask you to take another look at this. And let's look at something that really is going to make sense. We spent a year working with our people that we hired, consultants, to try to find a solution to the theater, and Uline thanked, thanked them, I thanked them, but they stepped in at the wrong time for getting this solution to the problem. They provided us with some money, but we were in the middle of making possibly the changes we would need to have made. So, I, I just have to tell you that I'm, my instinct is that, that we're making, we're making the wrong move possibly here. And so, I just wanted to let you know that I will send in writing each of you the reason for why I am doing this, and I know you don't agree, and I know it irritates you, and I apologize.
Alderman Rivera.
And I respect your opinion on this, Mayor, but what is the solution, then? I mean, give this an opportunity, because let's hear them out before we even make a decision like that. Again, they are willing to continue, they are going to continue to subsidize this. While they put together, let's hear what they have to offer. There's possible solutions to this, if we let them, if we hear what they have to say. Second of all, what is our plan, then? I mean, you're saying you're going to veto this, but what is our plan? What, what do you plan? We don't want to have an empty building there. That would be a total failure, a total failure. So, fine, you could veto it, but you have to give this council, what do we do next, then?
Understood.
So, let's give this an opportunity, hear what they have to say, and then we go from there, Mayor. I totally agree, Mayor, the city of Waukegan, we're not in the business of theater, but these people are. They love theater. So, let's give them an opportunity, let's see what they have to say, and go from there, Mayor. That's all I'm asking.
And I understand that. Could I possibly suggest that what we do is, we set this aside for 30 days, let's not approve this right now. Let's give Uline a chance to come in and sit down with us, and put on the table what their concepts are, and so that we can actually see them, and then bring it back for a vote based on what information they bring us. Let's give them a shot, and I'm willing to do it. I just think honestly, by entering into this extension of the contract through April 30th, 2013, we need to apply some pressure to get where we need to be. Now, you talk about the empty building, the building is already empty most of the year. That's already my concern. The effect has been seen, now luckily-
But there are still shows coming in, though, Mayor.
Pardon me?
There are still shows-
There are still some, but-
Which businesses downtown-
Don't get me wrong, I've never, I've never said anything about closing the theater. I have never said those words in my life. What I've said was, we need a biz, a better approach to making it so that we have more events. Beyond eighth grade graduations, CLC graduations, things like that, I'm talking about events that bring in talent, bring in entertainment. And as it is right now, the system that we've seen in place, Waukegan is always kind of like that in-between stop, and it's been very difficult to get that theater going so that something is happening a couple times a week. That's what I'm looking for, that's what I felt we needed to do. And again, I apologize, because I, I know that there's work on into this, don't, don't get me wrong, I do know that. But I also have put time into this myself, we started this process three years ago, and we brought in people who could help us to devise a new system of management. Alderman May, I do see you. Yes, ma'am.
Please.
And there were also other opportunities to bring in other models that had been deemed successful before, and we looked at Mr. Ray Shepherdson as a concept, and possibly bringing his concept back. But it is something, I think, that we haven't gotten to a point where awarding them this contract extension makes a lot of sense, and if I could say, the reason is, it takes the pressure off of them to provide more shows and to increase their performance level. 30 days is not going to make a big difference on whether or not we do this extension, because they, we have the time. And that's, that's basically what I'm looking at, that's what I'm trying to do here. If Uline, and they have brought the concept of doing this, I would like to have them come to us and pitch us on where their background is, what their experience is, but also, what model are they looking to apply to the Genesee Theater that will do those three goals that I, that I think should be the goals of the city of Waukegan? And how can they help us do that? I would, I would like to hear them speak, so that the, the people who live here, whose taxes pay for that debt note, that debt service, can hear how we're going to relieve them of some of that burden. And it's, I, again, I have no concept in my mind of the Genesee Theater not continuing to operate. That, that I don't see as a successful alternative. It's 24-plus million dollars that went into it, and we're stuck with the debt service, but I think we can do better with it. I think that someone can do better, even if it's SMG. And honestly, they have been wholly resistant at every step of the way since I took office to growing their entertainment package at the Genesee Theater. They have, and we need some leverage over them to either get them to do more, or to admit that they're not willing to, and then see, you know, again, before they do that, though, see what Uline is capable of bringing to the table. 30 days is not going to upend or destroy this entire effort. It will give us time to hear more concepts and more ideas before we approve this contract extension. Because once we do it, it's done. So I would respectfully request that we allow ourselves four more weeks to look at this, invite Uline to come in. I know it's early, but you know what, truthfully, before we know it, April 30th, 2013, is going to be tomorrow. And if we don't start now and start hearing their concepts, which I hope they've already been, you know, working over among themselves, we're going to find ourselves right up against the deadline again, and SMG's going to be given another extension. And my fear is that we'll be right where we are today, close 60, 65% of the time. So, that's all I request. That was, that's, I don't think it's, that it's, that it's something that's, that's over the top, I think it's a rational, reasonable request, and I think it protects the interests of the city of Waukegan's taxpayers. But again, I can only, you know, you, you can override my, my veto immediately if you wish, or we can take the chance to, to see and take a little more time on it.
Your Honor, let me speak.
Yes, Alderman.
I'm waiting, I'm ready to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, Alderman May, I apologize.
With all due respect, Mayor, Uline has dumped more than $450,000 into our theater over the past fiscal year. They personally backed shows to come here, Sheryl Crow, The Monkees, various other shows that are leaving me at the moment. They, they, Loverboy, they put their money behind these shows that, that no one else is willing to do. We're up here arguing about $3,700 or $5,000 for Waukegan Main Street, and, and in the same breath, we're going to cut $450,000 loose? We have not a single penny in our budget for the Genesee Theater. Tina tried to find $5,000 for Main Street, well, good luck finding $400,000 for the Genesee Theater, because Lord knows, we don't have it. We, you charge the Genesee Theater Oversight Committee with this, with this mission, and the private consultant that you speak with sits on that committee with us voluntarily, sits on that committee with us, and when this idea was presented to us by the member of our committee who is a representative from Uline, she was thrilled. We all sat there, everyone on that committee, Ann Lynn, Ralph Rivera, Noel Kisher, Lisa May, and Marla Forbes, and Brian Schenker, and we thought, what an opportunity to enter into this agreement, where they were, where they're willing to enter into more of a lessor, lessy type of a agreement with us to do this. Yes, they need more time to get it together. They're a very multifaceted company, they do many different things. Ask Camp John, the great things that Uline has done for Camp John in the last few years, because of their partnership. I'm going to have a hard time looking Uline in the face and asking them to explain to the city of Waukegan how they're going to donate a half million dollars to us to keep our theater open, when we don't have a single penny in the budget. I, I think that we're looking a gift horse in the mouth.
Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Moiseo.
I agree with Alderman May, I don't know why this wasn't discussed earlier, bringing up now, it just seems disorganized to me. I don't know why it wasn't thought out earlier. I, for one, was one that if, if Uline wouldn't have stepped up to the plate to keep the Genesee Theater, oh, running, I would have shut it down. I can't justify having a theater that, at the time, some of the numbers were 10% of the community uses, and then laying off policemen. That was the dilemma we were in a couple years ago. They stepped up and kept it open. And if, if they want to donate the money to keep it open, I'm not, I'm not hot about SMG either. I, I mean, they, what have they done for us? Nothing. It's been a bad, bad business relationship from the word go. It has been. It's been bad. You've got a for-profit company, running a, running an entity for a, a city, well, you know that's not going to work. So, I agree with- So, I agree with Alderman May. Let's just do this, and then let's work with Uline. They're willing to partner with us. They're, you know, it's not the best situation, but I'm not gonna look a gift horse in the mouth by any means. But again, like I said, I'm not hot on SMG, but for now, I'd rather just do this, get this, and then get... I mean, Uline has at least come to the table and said, "Let's talk. Let's talk. Let's try to work together and get something done." I'm all for that. I just don't know why this has been brought out now. Maybe I've been sleeping, but I don't know why it's been brought out now. I mean, we voted on it, it passed 9 to nothing. Let's go.
Well, I'm gonna answer, because what I read here that concerned me was that it seemed to me that we were entering in negotiations with Uline to run the Genesee Theater, not just to fund it. That goes beyond a cash gift. This is a management agreement that we're looking at doing. And I just wanted a preview of what their concepts were and their directions before we got into an agreement that extended the contract of, as I think we, as you said, Alderman Moiseo, this has not been the best business arrangement that we all have ever seen.
It's terrible.
And this continues it. But that was my concern, just to say, "Come on in. Let's talk about what you have in mind, what you want to put on the table, and let's go from there." I think that any organization, $150 million-plus organization like ours, would ask the same in the private sector of anybody looking to come in and run a 24-plus million-dollar installation, a branch, a division. That's all I was looking for. I'm not here to shut anything down. I'm not here to slam them. I'm just saying that, in my job, I have to look at the overall picture, and this was something I felt that we would be better served if they just, even if it was 15 minutes to come in and do it. Yes, Alderman Rivera.
Mayor, but when you, like Alderman May was saying, when they've put in over $400,000 into this, they deserve an opportunity. They deserve an opportunity to come up with a contract. But I'd like to have Noel come on up and speak in particular about the SMG contract.
This motion allows staff to enter into those negotiations with Uline so that we can determine exactly what the model will be, what the contract arrangement with Uline will be. What they have proposed to us is that they would lease the Genesee Theater from us. They would in turn hire a manager for the theater. They're leaning toward an individual person rather than a corporation at this time, but they haven't made that absolute decision because they haven't made a selection yet. But this would allow us to work toward what our preferences are, include things that are mandatory for us in that contract. In addition, our current contract with SMG, which if we extended it through April 30th under the same terms, this would continue, there is a 60-day termination clause. So, if come, let's just say November, we've settled on everything with Uline at that point, then we could provide the 60-day notice to terminate the contract with SMG at that point, and then it would cease. The idea is that, excuse me, that Uline would get all of their paperwork in order, their people hired, whatever they're doing, we would have our contract with them, and then they would have an overlap time period with SMG so that the new operators, the new management could learn the systems, ask all the questions, have a thorough and complete understanding, and benefit from the institutional knowledge of the current staff that's there, so that the new people could transition in, the old people could transition out, and it would be a clean transition for the city's benefit. And that they, I'm sorry, Uline hopes to retain as many of the current Genesee Theater employees as possible, those who have expertise and would like to remain. Was that helpful at all?
Sure. I mean, there's nothing that I wasn't already unaware of here, so, again, I just had to, you know, I'll withdraw this issue of the veto. I think it's, I'll be honest with you, I think we're all gonna be concerned about this in about six to eight months, because it is something I think that is just, I'm concerned that this is not what we need to know at this point to give the extension, but I'll withdraw it. But I am concerned. I am very, very concerned that this, as a division of this, basically this corporation, has completely failed us. It has not done what it was supposed to do. So, you bring in The Monkees and you bring in Katie Lang and all of this, and that's fine, but that's the rare opportunity for this theater to pay back on all the money that was invested, and not only money, but time as well. So, it is my job to make sure that all the divisions of this group are performing at a level that they should, and that's why I express my concern. I'm withdrawing the veto, so it is, you know, obviously, it is your wish. We'll move it forward. There'll be, you know, we'll just have to wait and see where it goes and see where Uline is at in whatever timeframe they're ready to present with us a true business model and a staffing model that makes sense, that will prove to us that the Genesee Theater actually can make money as opposed to just absorb it. So, Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Liz Uline has really stepped up to the plate for the city of Waukegan and the Genesee Theater. Here's a lady with a multimillion-dollar corporation taking time from her busy schedule to help with the Genesee Theater, because she cares about the arts. You know, this corporation is huge. They know how to manage. They know how to go forward, surely probably better than the city of Waukegan. They know how to market. She stepped up when we were on the ropes, $450,000, helped sponsor some shows. The concept, and also in the concept here, they're saying they want to take a look at the present management also and possibly make some changes there. And as is pointed out tonight, we have a clause in there, Lisa, it's how many?
Sixty.
Sixty-day clause in there that we can adjust? Wow, that's a great clause. The mayor's concerned? Absolutely correct. He should be concerned. It has been a money loser for a long time. I don't think it ever will make money. I was the only no vote when it first came on the board to build the thing. Chicago Theater couldn't make a go of it. Chicago Theater couldn't make a go of it. How are we gonna do it here? We're gonna have to subsidize it somewhat. That's a fact. Now, we have a lady, Liz Uline, wow, stepped up $450,000 with the Uline money to help it keep going? What a contributor that lady is. What a contributor. I mean, my hat goes off to her and her corporation. I mean, we found somebody that cares. I don't know of any other Waukegan money people that are stepping up to that extent. Friends of the Genesee Theater, of course, have helped. So, I think we, yes, we're buying time, and yes, it's almost the same thing, but as the economy gets better, as we get a little better, is give Uline a chance to possibly look at the present management of the Genesee Theater and see where we go. But I'm glad, Mayor, you stepped back on the veto idea, because it's better to work with us all together, to try to make things go, and I think you found yourself tonight, even. You're upset with one vote tonight, and I understand where you're coming from, but gee, that was only about $5,300. And I can find that money for you right away, but you probably won't agree there either, but you accept that graciously, and I appreciate that. We're gonna work together for a better Waukegan. I think the theater is a vital part of the downtown. It's a vital part of the economic engine of the downtown, and we just have to continue to work at it. But you're right, it's not utilized the way it should be. You're absolutely right. And that's been your goal when you started as mayor, is one of the first things you said is not, and I'm gonna open it up. We tried with theaters and some, but we gotta keep trying. But I really think we need to stay with Liz. I really do at this point, and I think it's just for the best interest of the city to continue on where we are at this point.
Okay. Understood. The ayes have it. It is moving forward. Next, we have no old business before us. Reports and communications, new business, recommended actions by Corporation Council, item A, approval of payroll dated June 27, 2012 in the amount of $1,318,716.14. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated June 29, 2012 in the amount of $938,891.14. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any block parties?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Where are they, which wards are they located?
They've all been submitted to my office.
Okay.
And I emailed responses to all the Alderman who submitted them, so they're all good.
Motion to approve all block parties by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Under ordinances and resolutions, item A, resolution authorizing the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, including 92 Gallagher Road. Motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we will go to Alderman's time. Following Alderman's time, we will go into a brief executive session regarding settlement of claims and pending litigation, and, but, you know, after the Alderman have finished their comments, for all intents and purposes, the meeting will have concluded, because we come back in from executive session and go right back out, and that concludes the meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, everybody. One, I want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. Second, and this might goes to Chief Grayhouse. Chief Grayhouse, can you speak to, you know, during these times of the year, a lot of people tend to congregate in family environments, and sometimes these congregations become, you know, messy. Can you kind of speak to how your department will be handling some of these calls where big crowds come to one house and want to have this huge get-together? I think this is gonna go in relation to that Noah's ordinance, but typically what happens is, and I use example, Mr. and Mrs. Weston was having a party, and all of a sudden, two people come up, another 20, another 30, and now you have a huge gigantic party. Is there anything that we can do to kind of say that a lot of this is not gonna be acceptable in some of our communities and some of these neighborhoods? Because this is what kind of starts off the problems, particularly that Fourth of July day. I'm saying this right.
Briefly, the way our ordinance is designed in certain aspects, we can't control personal parties at people's residences. We do monitor them to determine if it's becoming out of control. Usually, though, if it's a situation where the parties are gathering to a point, as you mentioned, there are already ancillary problems involved with that loud music, parking, and things of that sort, and that's when we get involved and deal with it at that level.
Okay.
But as far as saying, we monitor and say, "You can only have X amount of people at your residence." We can't do that, but we do monitor to determine if it's a problem. And like I said, it works out that way. If there's a lot of people, usually problems tend to come, and we deal with them.
So, I mean, so what I like to do is instruct, you know, those who are in the areas throughout the ward, if you start seeing this, a huge, large gathering of individuals, is it okay for them just to call the police, just kind of go through and observe?
Absolutely. We should have officers cruising the zone anyway, and they should be able to notice that increase of people picking up, but for some reason, if it does seem to be a problem, I would say definitely have them give us a call, and we'll check it out, and we'll monitor it. Usually, that helps if we're there, and they know we're, "Hey, how you doing? Everything's going fine. It's getting late. Make sure you guys turn the music down, don't, you know, watch your parking." That tends to control situations.
All right. Thank you. I just thought that was important to get that out there, because typically what happens, people come in and they start gathering, and problems come. So, you know, for those, particularly throughout the first ward, if you start seeing these things, don't hesitate to call. It is great to have a preventive maintenance in place. I have always been, you know, with this philosophy. If police come through and they cruise a couple of times, those who shouldn't be there will leave. Typically, that's kind of what happens. Well, for that being said, the second thing I want to, in any audits tonight, we have members from Trinity AMB Church, just want to thank you for coming out. They did make a phone call to me, said they're gonna start observing and coming to meetings, try to get more involved into the community. As we already know, they do a tremendous job of our back-to-school program. I think there's a farmer's market that's over there right now, so we want to just thank them for coming out and sharing today's meeting. Today was a short one, so I see some of the members were here, but the troopers are still there. Thank you very much. Until Pastor Blunt, we say hello.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. One, I'd like to extend my condolences on behalf of myself and I'm sure the council for the passing, this past month, of a couple of retired Waukegan firefighters. Those are Phil Cedar and Ray Wallene. I've known Mr. Cedar probably most of my life. I played ball with his son Eddie when we were 10 years old, so that's about 40 years ago, a little over 40 years ago. And Mr. Wallene has been a member of Cribbage League that I've played cribbage with and against over the years. So, just to express the condolences of myself and I'm sure on behalf of the council for those two gentlemen that have passed away, and extend that to their families. I'd also like to reiterate what the mayor said. It's been very dry, so please keep your fireworks under control. Preferably just go down to the lakefront and watch the show that's gonna be put on Friday or Wednesday night at 9:30. And finally, with all the talk about Main Street, I know that when Delilah was here and we painted the town, she her hands were full of paint, and her marker was dried out, and she wanted to send an autograph picture to the city. I'm just curious, did we ever get it? Does anybody know? We'll find out. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yes.
Alderman Bedling.
Just one item. I've been a police radio since the second week I took office last year, and I listen to it religiously. I hear, well, I'll say, starting in last October, traffic stops began, and I hear a lot of no valid suspended, no valid suspended, no valid suspended revoked. Chief, those would be people without driver's licenses that are pulled over driving a car?
Yes.
Correct? I asked traffic if they could put together a number compared to how many tickets are written overall, how many are no valid suspended? Now, I don't know what went on here in the past, but other communities hook cars, and if somebody's driving a car without a license and insurance, and then we have to waste police time to wait for a licensed driver to come and pick the car up, I don't know what kind of message that sends, other than we're just a wide-open community who doesn't enforce our laws. I don't have a problem with hooking cars personally. Maybe $500 is too high, but if there's not much of a penalty to that, what's gonna happen to us here? And I hear that a lot on the police radio. I wish we could look at that once again. North Chicago hooks cars for loud music, $500. Did 100, between 100 and 200 last year. I have a North Chicago policeman that lives in my ward. That's where he called me up one day, and I took a trip to North Chicago and got their ordinance for loud music for cars, and that's where the rest of it came from, but I don't see how it's illegal or unfair to hook cars with people driving without a license and insurance. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Ah, yes, one thing. I'd like to say thank you to the Park District for putting on the Independence Day Parade the last, I don't know how many years, but I have participated in at least the last nine years, and I know at the last council meeting, our city clerk, Wayne Motley, stated that this year would probably, possibly be the last year. year would probably, possibly be the last year. I would hope not, because during the parade yesterday, a lot of people, they look forward to that parade, and they were stressing to me that they hope that it's not the last year, and they appreciate us coming out, and even though it was 90-plus degrees, I think, yesterday, they enjoy walking in the parade as well as sitting on the sidelines. So, I'd like to say that if we can at least, at all possible, encourage the Park District to continue to have that event, because I think a lot of people in the community look forward to that in the city of Waukegan, and even outside of the city of Waukegan, they like to come in to our community and watch that parade. And I think I'll miss it, 'cause I enjoy throwing that candy out and, and just walking and seeing a lot of the people that live here in Waukegan that you don't otherwise get to see very often. So, thank you to the Waukegan Park District and all the other entities, the city of Waukegan that helped put on that parade, and the other people that come in outside of our community that participate in that parade, so, thank you.
Alderman Tempest. Thank you. Water bills. Got an email today, I received my bill today also, two months late, cash flow to the city. Also, sometime in the past, some years ago, we used, I used 7,000 gallons of water. You used to show me on my bill what my sewer rate wa- rate was and my water bill rate was. Now I just get a number there. And also, it showed my $5 a month garbage fee, which I wanna talk about also. Water bill be nice if it showed you the gallons that you use, fine, they do that, but the price I'm paying per gallon for sewer rate, water rate, I think it should be on there. And then, the other point is a garbage fee pickup there. When they put the $5 per month on, which helps, I'd rather see that on my tax bill, because I can write it off then. Being on my water bill, I can't write it off. And it shows on the water bill, $5 per can, but some units, we have one water meter, and I'm just wondering, it's a three unit, and I just wondered if we're collecting for each unit for a garbage can. It's something we, we should look into. The next point, vehicle stickers. I did email Tina, and she answered me right back, our vehicle sticker, we gotta get a little smarter. You know, we got them running this way now. Next year, we should run them up and down. Now the policeman coming by, not running this way, hey, they must be short this year, and change the color. This year's vehicle sticker compared to last year, they almost look alike. It's very, very difficult to tell the difference, but if we use a different color code, you know, this year a greenish, next year bluish, it'd be easier for the policeman who's enforcing your vehicle to spot it immediately, up and down, and, and Tina said she would see if that can be done, and I'm gonna be watching. Next year, I'll be around, I hope, so good Lord willing.
Talking about putting a year on.
Yeah, the year also, which is, yeah, the year also is very important. Thank you. And then I wonder when the chief, when we're gonna start enforcing vehicle stickers? I think we should start pretty soon. This is July 1st now, and the April 30th was the deadline? May?
May 1st.
June. That's two months, 60 days. By now, they should have it on, or they should be giving a ticket, and I would hope we start to enforce those. And that's, that's my comments, and I hope our Uline partner stays aboard and we get more shows going in the Genesee Theater also. Thank you. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Because it's in my ward, kudos again to the Waukegan Sports Park. I would like everybody that's viewing this at home and here, that hasn't been up there, please go up there on Green Bay, north of York House, directly across from the airport. A fantastic facility. The soccer, the national soccer championships were last week. Again, as David Motley had said, 1,100 hotel rooms. Coming ba- coming this summer, our U.S. Club Champions, the regional and the national champions, it's another 650 rooms. Eclipse Soccer Tournament, that's another 200 rooms. And Game Day Baseball Series Championships, that's another 450 rooms. My compliments to the Park District, Mr. Motley, and what you've done over there. I did go past Motley Drive the other day, it looked very nice. Way beyond my expectations. I've heard nothing but good in my ward up there. Kudos to you and the rest of the commissioners up there, and young David, also to you, sir, for what you did with this Lake County organization. That's all I have.
Alderman Rivera.
Kudos also to the Waukegan Park District and their board. We got one of the best park districts around, there's no question about it. Also to David Motley for being involved with the Lake County Bureau Organization. Happy Fourth of July to everyone coming up. And also, I got a call this evening before I came here, citizen who was concerned for their neighbor who's elderly. So it's very important with this heat going on to check the elderly. I advise the constituent to call the fire department, we are doing wellness checks. Am I correct, chief? We are doing wellness, wellness checks on, on the elderly. So don't hesitate in calling, 'cause with this heat, people without air conditioners, it can be pretty, uh, pretty deadly, especially to the, to the elderly. So definitely check. And last but not least, I just, on the air, I hope she's listening, but I wanna congratulate my wife for retiring 35 years with the Secretary of State. I hope she has a wonderful and healthy retirement from here on out. She worked hard. Thank you, sweetie.
You're welcome.
That's it.
All right, we take a motion to go into executive session for settlement of claim pending litigation. Who said so moved?
Cunningham.
Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thanks, everybody. Okay, motion to go back into regular session by Alderman Beadling, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Beadling, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.